...to further record. On this program, we'll talk about issues that affect Sudbury, the town and its people. Today I have with me Russell Kirby. Russell is the chairman of the planning board, and the planning board sometimes takes credit for things it does do and maybe credit for some of the things it really doesn't want to do. Today, Russ is going to talk to us about the things that the planning board is responsible for and how they work with the other town boards. Russ, sometimes people aren't aware of how the boards interplay among each other. Could you give us a little rundown on how you work with some of the other boards in town?
Sure. The planning board's responsibilities are primarily to oversee the development of residential properties in the town. And our actions are governed by the statutes of the Commonwealth, the subdivision control law specifically, the rules and regulations of our own board, and the town zoning bylaws. There's a general misconception in the minds of most people that the planning board is also responsible for commercial development. That, however, is the responsibility of the Board of Selectmen. So the development of commercial property is theirs, residential property is ours, and we have to work together. We provide advice to the Board of Selectmen as they go through their process, but we do not have direct responsibilities in that regard.
Well, when somebody comes into town, and you know, let me take Route 20 since everybody's familiar with Route 20. When somebody comes into town and they decide that they do want to put up some kind of a commercial establishment there, what's their first move? What do they do? How do they start working their way into where we now have, frankly, a regional shopping center here?
Well, I guess in order to understand the process, you have to go back a ways in time. It was back in the '30s that the town first adopted zoning regulations. And the zoning regulations set the basic theme. Over the years, the zoning regulations have been changed, and the town meeting, through a two-thirds majority vote, can change any zoning regulation that they choose. And it's been a combination of things over the years that have led to what we now have on Route 20. Some of the zoning was perhaps unfortunate in hindsight. We have sections where commercial zones are only 100 feet deep, which means individual lots may be divided between commercial use and residential use.
Wasn't this initially because some people would set up farm stands to sell their vegetables, that kind of thing? Was that how some of that 100-foot depth?
Those are some of the reasons. The exact reasons why, of course, have been lost to history. But then, an individual who chooses to open a business establishment or construct one would have to abide by whatever the zoning regulations were. And each district has different permitted uses and certain specific prohibited uses.
How many different districts do we have?
We have business, limited business, light industrial, and two classes of residential. I believe that about covers it. Residential is either 40,000 square feet or 60,000 square foot minimum lots.
Depending on the area of town.
That's right. And then, of course, this past year, we passed the five-acre zoning in the wayside in Historic Preservation Zone.
Yes. Okay. Now, start giving me a feel for how you work with the other boards. I noticed the selectmen come into play and the Board of Appeals comes into play with some of the things that we do.
Well, it's true. As far as zoning regulations is concerned, only the zoning Board of Appeals has the authority to grant exception to zoning regulations. There are certain special permits that can be issued either by the planning board or by the Board of Appeals or by the Board of Selectmen. There's only one board which has a responsibility over a particular type. But the planning board generally is given an opportunity to make recommendations to the Board of Appeals or to the Board of Selectmen. We try to provide some guidances to what the intent of the zoning regulations were and try to cooperate as best we can with all of the other boards.
Okay. Now, in doing this, you've developed a growth management plan for Sudbury, haven't you?
Well, we're in the process of putting one together. We've recognized the need for it certainly over the years. One of the major problems that we face is deficiencies within our zoning regulations. There's language in there which is obscure. There are even inconsistencies within the zoning regulations. And the recognition of that says we should make some changes, and then we say, okay, what changes should we make? And one thing has led to another, and here we are with recognizing that we have a rather formidable task ahead of us.
Well, it seems now that you mentioned in trying to put together your growth management plan, sometimes when you're trying to correct these deficiencies, you're opening the door to bigger problems.
That's true. Any change has its impact, and sometimes that impact is favorable and sometimes it's not. And without some good basis to work from, it's very difficult to foresee what the impact is going to be. That's why Route 20 looks like it does. Someone comes along with a proposal to do something, and if you view it out of context, then it appears to be rather benign. But then, when someone else does the same thing or does something like it, or perhaps they go a little bit further the next time because it doesn't seem so bad anymore, then the cumulative effect is what we now have.
Well, I know that you mentioned to me one time before that sometimes when you're trying to put a change in, in order, let's say, to protect wetlands or wildlife, you find that before you can get that order to take effect, you have a group of people who will try to rush in plans, sort of grandfathering themselves in to protect themselves from the new plans that you have to, frankly, stave off these things.
Well, that's true. And that's a phenomenon which is unique to Massachusetts. In Massachusetts, we have what's referred to as a grandfather protection against zoning changes. And the way that works is that if a zoning change is proposed, then before that is acted upon, any property owner can file a plan to make a change in compliance with the zoning in existence at that time. And their right to do so is protected then for eight years. And the problem with that was pointed out in some newspaper articles regarding the development in Cape Cod, that when a moratorium is announced or a zoning change is announced, then the irresponsible developers who don't want to abide by the rules will be the ones who will rush in, protect their rights to go ahead and do exactly what the town is attempting to prevent.
Okay. So there's very little that you can do, in a sense, for that, isn't there, under present legislation at least?
That's correct. But there is a commission that's been established within the legislature which is addressing that. They recognize the need for the communities to exercise more reasonable control.
What are some of the plans now that you have for us as not only Route 20, because there are more places in Sudbury than Route 20 that you're dealing with, but even as Route 20 for a start, what are some of the plans that you have for us over there to relieve some of the congestion we're finding?
Well, I guess we should go back, perhaps, to the infamous proposal from the DPW to build a section of interstate highway connecting our fire department to our police department. That perhaps gathered more attention than anything else in memory. And what it did was it focused on a major problem, and that is that if the town doesn't see to its own problems and work out solutions that are acceptable, then someone else is going to do it for them. As a consequence of that, a study was made of the traffic in the town. We hired a firm of HMM consultants, and they collected information. They made a traffic model for the town, a computer traffic model. And through that, we proved that the DPW had exceptional basis for their declaration of Route 20 as an arterial highway. But as a result of that, we've now expanded that, and we have a model of the entire town. And this is providing us with some tools, and we recognize the need for more tools now to go forward.
Is this something that shows up in this plan that you have over here?
Well, the plan that we have over here is some material that was put together by a group of volunteers in the town who followed up on the Route 20 study. The objective was to determine whether or not the DPW proposal was realistic, was practical, or were there better alternatives? And what they've done is, in my mind, an excellent job. The town is extremely fortunate to have the kinds of talent that it does come forward with these things.
Yeah. I was going to say, this is pretty expensive talent that we've been lucky enough to get.
You better believe it.
I'd like to give them some credit if we...
I guarantee you, there was no way we'd be able to go on the Florida town meeting this year and get an appropriation to pay for the kinds of services that we've already received here.
Can you, yeah, I was going to say, maybe you can show us some of the things that they're planning to do, or what is this? This is Route 20 as we know it now.
This is Route 20. Perhaps if I go over...
Yes, please.
Help a little bit. This is Route 20, and shows Sudbury Crossing and the 1776 Plaza, the Union Avenue intersection here, and Knobscott Road is down here. And what the study showed was that there are basically two major problems with the traffic flow. One is the merging of north-south and east-west traffic along the section of the post road between Union Avenue and Knobscott Road.
Yeah. Those are our two major points, isn't it, where traffic funnels into Route 20?
That's correct. Well, the interesting part of the study was that only 25% of the traffic that heads east in the morning along the post road that passes Horse Pond makes it down as far as Landham Road.
Okay.
Okay.
That's something which the DPW never recognized and never addressed.
So what we have is something like 30% of the traffic is moving from north to south or south to north, depending upon whether you're talking about the morning commute or the evening commute. And when the two merge along Route 20, then the north-south traffic flow has no choice but to make a left-hand turn.
Sure. They've got to come in.
And when they make a left-hand turn, then, of course, they have to stop and wait, and that interferes with the flow of traffic. So that was one of the major components in the congestion. The other was that particularly in the afternoon, you have your local business traffic, which is entering the area, which gets all mixed up with the reverse of the north-southeast-west condition that you had in the morning.
In the morning.
So that's why in the afternoon it's even worse than it is in the morning.
I admit to being one of the people who avoids the Boston Post Road, you know, during commuter time, that I will try to go after 7 o'clock.
Well, I understand that the merchants can tell the hour of the day by the fact that the stores suddenly become empty long about 4:00 in the afternoon. Very, very few people will go down there and shop during that time.
Yes.
So the problem impacts the merchants as well as the commuters.
Sure. Which, of course, is something we're concerned about too, because they're part of our tax base in the town.
That's correct. That's correct. Now, what's shown on here is a proposed modest modification to the post road, which would involve providing left-hand turning lanes so that when traffic is waiting to turn left, it has someplace to sit out of the main flow of traffic.
Yeah. Is this what they call channelizing traffic?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. And it would undoubtedly require that traffic signals, traffic lights be put down at Knobscott Road, which would have to be synchronized with the ones that are presently at Union Avenue and also with the ones that are back here at Concord Road.
Yeah. Because I find myself occasionally taking a right-hand turn, not because I want to, but because it's the only way I can get back to come back the other way again.
That's right.
So sure, that would eliminate a lot of that.
So this is a proposal which is probably going to take place. There's some, there was some restriping of the road that was done down there. People probably noticed that. But even more significant than that, what this plan shows is a reduction in the number of curb cuts that would be allowed on the post road.
Okay.
Because the way things are presently, you have traffic which is westbound, which, when it gets the light, can turn and go into the Sudbury Crossing area, or they can proceed further down and then make a turn into the 1776 Plaza area. Now, when they do that, then you have two opportunities to interfere with the eastbound traffic. So remove some of the opportunities, then some of the congestion won't occur. So that's basically what they're illustrating here. And this would require changes in some of the parking layouts, but it would not have any significant impact on the parking or access to the retail establishments. And many of the merchants have been introduced to this, and it's been generally favorably met with.
Yeah. I was just going to ask you if somebody has thought to put them into the planning process, so that's good to hear.
That's right.
That you have talked to them, too.
Well, then, they went beyond this and said, okay, this is something which can be done in the short term, and will probably have some effect, but the effect would be marginal. So they began to look at alternatives, and they said, okay, we've got two basic problems. One is the merging of the east-west flow, and the other is the mixing of the local and the through traffic.
Sure. And this is coming in now from Union Avenue and coming in from Knobscott still that we're dealing with on...
That's correct. So then they said, all right, what can we do to change that? Well, they looked first at this dogleg in the road.
Yes.
Said if they could get rid of that dogleg in the road, then they eliminate the merging of the north-southeast-west traffic.
Yeah.
So they came up with Plan B. And Plan B goes actually far beyond Plan A in a lot of respects. What this shows is Knobscott Road coming in here. Union Avenue actually comes down like this. And the traffic presently is doglegged that way. So they said, all right, supposing there were no rail traffic along the railroad bed here.
Yeah. Which at this point, there isn't. Isn't that a deadline? They don't use the railway?
No, it is used. It's used to haul freight.
It is used still.
They have only one customer, and there's miles and miles of roadbed that are maintained to serve one customer.
But just that one.
And the railroad probably would just as soon abandon that stretch of roadway, of roadbed if they could. But aside from that fact, it also crosses Route 20, and occasionally, they wind up with a train stuck across the road. And, of course, that does wonders for the thorough traffic.
I haven't had that pleasure, I'm happy to say, in all the time I've been here.
But seriously, though, what happens when that occurs is that if the police are required in the town at a point west of there, then they can't get through Route 20.
Yes.
And also, if the, if the fire department is required at a point east of that, they can't get across. They have to detour, which increases the amount of time they have.
Could be very serious.
That's right. So there is a public safety aspect of the fact that there is an active grade crossing here. So if that roadbed could be acquired, then Knobscott Road could be rerouted along the roadbed and could join Union Avenue at a point just north of Station Road.
When you say could be acquired, do you mean by the town, or would the state have to acquire that?
Well, the state would undoubtedly have to be involved in this project. This is much more than the town could afford to spend. But the state does have great concerns over the highway problems. In fact, I was at a MAGIC meeting last night, and it was MAGIC is a regional planning group that's probably very appropriately named. Sudbury belongs to two regional, subregional planning groups, Metro West and MAGIC. And Metro West is communities south of Route 20, and MAGIC are the communities just north of Route 20, is the Minuteman area, and MAGIC is an acronym. But it was mentioned in there, the problems that the state has with the highways and the kind of planning and engineering that has been done, and there was nothing in the pipeline to deal with increasing the ability of the roads to carry more cars.
And we know that they're coming.
Well, they project almost a 4% increase in population each year. And they have projected that out to indicate that the delays in traffic due to congestion will increase by upwards of 400% by the turn of the century, because there is nothing in the pipeline to make it otherwise. So that's not something you want to look forward to or relish, but that says that the towns need help. And if someone comes up with a solution to one of the problems, then I think that the DPW is probably going to go along with it. And this plan, by the way, this concept, has met with verbal approval of several members of the DPW.
Well, that's a head start.
So we don't know whether that's good or bad.
Because...
But it was a fact.
But that's a slow process, too.
But this would address the dogleg problem. It would eliminate that.
Yeah.
Then it leaves the mixing of the commuter traffic, of the through traffic, and the local business traffic. So they said, all right, we've got Station Road, which runs from Union Avenue down to the post road.
Yes.
If we could use that to take some of the traffic off of the present Route 20, then that would enable us to divert it, and that would give us a bypass up to this point.
Okay. Show us where the present Union Avenue comes on to Route 20.
I have to go around here to the other side.
It's, yeah.
It's...
Is it over here a little bit further, almost into the center of it where I see that mall?
It's right in here where these trees are shown is where the intersection falls, is right about here. The idea is that you have to find someplace else to put the cars besides Route 20. So Station Road looked very promising, so they said, all right, we can use that and bring the traffic up to this point. And then what do we do? Do we bring it down on here and merge it with this? Well, that's a possibility. But then they said, all right, if we're looking at alternatives, let's look at the best of all worlds, and that would be to continue this across and rejoin Route 20 down near the Star Market.
And Station Road, of course, comes out just before Concord Road comes into the post road. It's just a little bit west of Concord Road.
That's correct. It's just west of Hot Brook, as a matter of fact.
Yes.
The end result of this would be to provide a Route 20 bypass around the business district.
For the commuter traffic, basically.
For all of the through traffic. The same general idea is what they have in Weston.
Oh, sure.
Conceptually, that idea.
Yes.
Wouldn't look the same, but it would function pretty much the same way.
Yes, yeah. That's true, because it did, at Route 20 at one time, did go right through Weston Center.
That's right.
Sure. So that bypass helped.
They had the foresight to go ahead and move the road when it didn't cost nearly so much. But then they said, all right, if we can take the, separate the through traffic from the local business traffic, then we've accomplished the two major objectives. We've eliminated the merging of the north-southeast-west, and we've separated the commercial local traffic from the through traffic. And they said, oh, swell, okay, now...
That traffic really had no interest in being on post road. It was just a matter of getting that short distance.
Yeah. And we have a chicken-and-egg kind of situation here. We don't know whether the traffic on there is brought on the business or whether the business is brought on the traffic. It's probably some of each. But like Lincoln, like Weston, I'm sorry, as soon as you relocate Route 20, then that leaves you with a lot of options in the local business district that you never had before.
Yes.
And Sudbury is a crossroads, actually, now, and we're located physically between Weston and Marlborough. And things are going to change. And they're saying, okay, which way do we want to go? Do we want to join Marlborough and make Sudbury look like that? Or do we want to see if we can't go the other way and make Sudbury look more like Weston?
More like it, the small town that it was, really.
So they said, all right, if we can separate the traffic out and change the road layouts, then that would leave us with an opportunity, perhaps, to do a lot of work down here in the business district and make it more pedestrian-oriented than it is today. Leave the roads there so that the traffic can come in and pass through at low speed, which would be conducive to the conduct of business and also make it a lot more pleasant for the people using it. So they said, all right, we take Union Avenue. The dimensions of Union Avenue and the placement of the buildings in there are such that you could put a small park in the middle, and you could have traffic move around the edges of it at low speed. And down on the post road area, what's presently the post road, you would be able to then develop commercial properties out near the sidewalk with plantings and improve the aesthetics, put parking in behind the buildings, and generally improve the overall appearance. But this is a concept at this point.
Yes.
People need to understand that. There's the bulldozers, they're not going to go to work down there next week. There are a great many problems associated with this area, and they've identified a great many of them through this process. It sits right on one of the major aquifers in the town, for example.
Okay. So that's going to be a serious consideration.
There's wetlands, of course, there's Hot Brook.
Yes.
And you just don't go ahead and build a road across a waterway in this state anymore. And there's also wetland concerns over in this area here. Of course, there's private property that has to be taken into account. So there's a lot of work to be done.
But at least we've made a beginning.
That's right. And I think it's an excellent beginning.
Yes.
I think the people have done a fine job. In fact, as a result of the interest in the Route 20 situation on the part of the citizens of the town, has resulted in town, Sudbury being characterized as an enlightened community. Picked that up at a regional conference, so these efforts are very, very well-known, and they know that David took on Goliath.
What a terrific slogan, Sudbury, the enlightened community.
Yeah.
Well, now, Route 20 is not your only concern, though, as far as Sudbury's concerned. How are things happening up in north Sudbury around the Route 117 area?
Well, we have, we recognize that what has happened on the post road could happen anywhere else in town unless there are measures taken to prevent it. And Route 117 is an area that has several problems. Like Route 20, it sits on a major aquifer. We have a contaminated well up there. Everyone's familiar with the Sperry property. There's some contamination up in there, and there's conservation land which has been set aside. In fact, there's a section of land up there which is owned by the Park and Rec, for which a proposal has been put forth to put in a golf driving range.
You know, that has popped up several times in the course of the years.
Yes, it has. And this particular piece of land is extremely sensitive. The fact that it sits in an aquifer is one, and there are endangered wildlife species which have been identified in that area by one of the state agencies. So hopefully, the town is going to proceed very cautiously through this whole process and make sure that they don't commit themselves to anything unfortunate without the ability to back away.
Well, maybe that's something that we should devote another session to than to educate some of our town folks as to what's going on up there.
I think that would be an excellent idea. In fact, I think the Conservation Commission could provide the town people with a lot of information. In fact, they have an article which is going to go on the Warrant of Town Meeting for a Wetland Protection Act, Wetland Protection Bylaw, I should say. And I think that it's a complex issue, and I think it would be great if you could have some of them on here to talk about it so the people in the town have a better idea what it's all about before town meeting.
We'll do that. We'll get them to talk, for the record, too.
Good.
Now, I understand that there is a public hearing coming up pretty soon on, is it the 28th of February regarding some planning that's going on? Do you want to tell us a little bit about that?
That's correct. There's a commission. The title of the commission escapes me at the moment, but it's got a brochure there. You can take a quick look at that.
This is sure. That's what I have over here.
There's a legislative commission. It's called the Special Commission on Growth and Change in the Commonwealth, and it's chaired by Senator Carol Amick and Representative Carmen Buell. And this has been formed in response to the fact that communities are not well-equipped to deal with change. And I mentioned earlier the problem of grandfathering.
Yes.
There is also the question of impact fees. It's recognized that when a development takes place, that there is an impact, and the impact is usually expensive, and the expense is usually borne by the community. For example, you put in a large development, a large number of units, and you wind up with more children in the community, and the schools, therefore, have to accommodate them. So in some states, a community can assess fees to prepare the town and offset the costs.
Is that almost like a stabilization fee type of idea?
Well...
Instead of giving you the entire burden at one time, try to build up some kind of a cushion?
Well, no, this actually would be an assessment made against the developer.
I see.
At the time the development is made, and it serves as a regulating effect. Now, the planning board has been able to acquire some funds on a volunteer basis. We picked up $216,000 for the town this past year. Without these kinds of tools, and we're hoping that we can get the tools, and I think that it would be extremely beneficial to the town if we can. I hope people will attend this public hearing and support it.
Well, that's why I wanted to give a specific time and date on this over here. As I understand it now, the public hearing is going to be on Tuesday, February 28th.
That's correct.
And the public hearing itself is at 7:30 at the Sudbury Town Hall. And before that, now, I noticed that they have something from 3:00 to 5:00, what they're calling focus sessions, also at the Sudbury Town Hall. And is this to prepare them and to give them a little more background information about what the public hearing is going to be about coming in?
Well, the commission, as I understand it, will be presenting information so that the people who will be attending the public hearing will be a little better informed, and also, there will be exchange of views even beforehand. But the public hearing is the most important part of it, because they have to keep notes. Those all become part of the legislative record.
Okay. Well, let me repeat that again, then, that on Tuesday, February 28th, from 3:00 to 5:00, they will have a focus session at the town hall. And at 7:30 PM, they're going to have the public hearing at the town... And at 7:30 PM, they're going to have the public hearing at the town hall. And certainly, those of you who are interested in the quality of life in Sudbury would find it well worthwhile to go to that public hearing one more time, Tuesday, February 28th, 3:00 to 5:00, the focus section, session, and 7:30 PM, the public hearing. This is Mary Jane Hillary, and everything you've heard today has been For the Record.